Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. I will call the City Council Meeting of May 14th, 2019 to order. Seeing as there's nobody here for the open forum, if you could please all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Bless you. The next item is the approval of the minutes of the Special City Council Work Session of April 23rd, 2019, the regular City Council Meeting of April 23rd, 2019, and the Special City Council Work Session of April 25th, 2019.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes have been approved. The first presentation we have goes to Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. I am excited to invite up Principal Wise, and as she's coming up, I will just thank her for her 29 years of service in Richfield Public Schools. It's an honor to be able to recognize that. Thank you for being here and for all of the work you've done. I've had an opportunity through my church to partner with Centennial on a couple of things, and it's just been exciting and impressive to see all of the good work that's happening there. So I will hand it over to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez, and councilmembers. I'm deeply honored to be here, representing not only Centennial in my years of service in the district, but also I feel very privileged to be here with all the fine police officers that are here, whom many of you have been to Centennial. You've supported us. You are there for us. It's been quite a partnership, and I think of what you've done for our schools, not only Centennial but our district, so I want to say thank you. And I had an opportunity to say hello to some of my old buddies when I first started there. Officer Rogie kind of led me on the right path and helped me out, and so I really appreciate that. And I also want to thank all the people that have worked with me. I can't tell you how wonderful Richfield Public Schools are. I've worked in all the schools with the exception of the middle school. I've always felt supported. Community events. Our schools are fantastic. My daughter's here who graduated from Richfield Public Schools, went on to get a fine four-year degree, and has moved into a role in a local company doing quite well. And I always thank Richfield Public Schools for the education that they gave her as well. And Superintendent Janowski's here. He's supported our path. The School Board of Richfield Public Schools has always been supportive of our path at Centennial. And of course, some staff members are here who truly make Centennial. So I accept this this day in honor of all the people I've worked with and all the people that have impacted my life, and especially the lives of the students that have gone through Richfield Schools. So I thank you very much, and I look forward to celebrating June 4th.
Thank you, Principal Wise. Councilmember Garcia.
You know, LeAnn, one of the things that when I would drop by Centennial, which I haven't in a while, but one of the first things I would see is you. And you were always so friendly and had a smile on your face, and everyone you worked with, it was like, it wasn't your job. It was kind of like you were really into it. You really enjoyed it. And those were your kids, and you had ownership, and you had, you know, you wanted to provide the best for them. And you also, I think, have a good program when it comes to inviting volunteers in to help you and your staff. And I'm just always really, really impressed because you were the type of leader that was liked and respected. And then you're the type of leader that the parents were just always proud of, and you know, and it's rare to find principals or anyone connected with the schools that have the personality and the spirit that you have in your service to our kids. And appreciate all your service, and you've done a hell of a good job, and God bless you and wish you well.
Well, thank you, Edwina. You were at Centennial when I first started. You'd come over and do volunteer work, and you instilled in me the passion to stay there. I've been at Centennial 18 years, and I never once had an inclination to leave because it wasn't a job. It was a passion, a love of kids. And then through the partnerships that developed from people like yourself showing me the way, Officer Rogie showing me the way to deal with some different situations came up, and I was truly blessed to be there, be chosen to be the principal. And the next steps, I plan on being around Richfield. I love Richfield. I love our school district, and the opportunities that have been afforded to me through different people in the district have been fabulous.
Good.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Supple.
I just wanted to echo the gratitude that has been expressed. You've dedicated your whole career here to Richfield and to the children of Richfield and the families of Richfield, and we truly do appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary. And Mary and I go way back, too.
I would like to say thank you as well. That is my neighborhood school, and I've always loved going to Centennial. I think it's a representation of Richfield. It's a representation of our world. It's a very global community. The parents in Centennial, I mean, they talk about Centennial as a community. They feel connected. There's so many community-type of things going on there, so it's not just a school, but folks are really building those relationships with one another. And it was definitely a place, and I think I've said this a couple of times when I'm there, is if you're having a bad day, go to Centennial, look on the walls, talk to the kids, and you just, your day gets better. And thank you for making that environment happen, that community happen. Thank you for your leadership. You will greatly be missed.
Thank you. Well, we have a saying, "Make this the best day ever."
Yes.
How can you go wrong? You can choose to be happy. And just a shout-out to all our Centennial families and students who come every day and want nothing but the best for their kids, and we're blessed to be able to work with them.
You know, Mayor, I would like to, you know, hopefully kneel, and we'll put on the board out there, you know, on June the 4th, and salute Mayor, LeAnn, because that would really be an honor, and I'm glad that we were part of this. Could we take a picture with you?
Absolutely.
I think that'd be great, if you don't mind.
And then we have the proclamation to read afterwards. We hereby pay honor and celebrate the 30-year education career of Centennial Elementary Principal LeAnn Wise. And whereas Mrs. Wise began her career at Richfield Public Schools ISD in 1990 and taught for eight years at Sheridan Hills Elementary School as a third-grade teacher. She was then a graduation standards coach for the district for one year before becoming the Assistant Principal at Richfield Intermediate School in 1999. Mrs. Wise became Principal of Centennial Elementary School in 2001. And whereas, Mrs. Wise is known throughout the city as an exemplary leader in public education and has served as Centennial Elementary's principal for 18 years. And whereas, Mrs. Wise's service to public education in the area of sporting made visible statewide impact while she served as head coach of Richfield Girls Basketball Team from 2006 to 2011. Mrs. Wise went on to lead the team to secure the Classic Suburban Conference Championship in 2008, 2009, and 2010. Further, under her guidance, the team secured 2011 through 2012 Section VI AAA Championship and the 2011-2012 State AAA Runner-Up. This endeavor was one of the highlights of her service for Richfield U-Sports and one of the most rewarding aspects of her career and a rallying point for the city of Richfield. And whereas, Mrs. Wise has served public education through active membership in several organizations such as Ladies Active Random Kindness, donating Thanksgiving meals to Centennial Elementary families through its parent-teacher-student organization. And whereas, on behalf of the entire City Council, I want to express my sincere appreciation for Mrs. Wise for her loyalty to the city of Richfield over the past 30 years in which wish her much happiness as she begins this exciting new chapter in her life. Now, therefore, I, Maria Regan Gonzalez, Mayor of the city of Richfield, do hereby proclaim June 4th, 2019 as LeAnn Wise Day in the city of Richfield. We urge all citizens to acknowledge the work of Mrs. Wise and what she has done for public education in Richfield, and we wish her all the best in the next stage of her life. Congratulations. Thank you so much, Principal Wise. You will be greatly missed. Do you have any exciting plans immediately after retirement?
Well, my family just bought me kind of a retirement toy, a Jeep, and my grandchildren have already figured out how to take the roof off and the doors, and can't wait to go to ice cream stores and things like that with Mamaw, so that's going to occupy quite a bit of my time.
Be careful driving because we've got our famous Richfield Blues here.
It's not red.
Okay, we will ask Chief Henthorn to please come up for the proclamation declaring May 12th through the 18th, 2019 as National Police Week, and May 15th, 2019 as Peace Officers' Memorial Day in the city of Richfield.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. This is a special week for law enforcement. It's National Police Week with May 15th being National Police Officers' Memorial Day. I had the opportunity in 2011 to go out to National Police Week as part of the FBI National Academy. The things that I saw and had the opportunity to experience was unbelievable, with over 300,000 other police officers from all over the country and all over the world to be able to be at the candlelight vigil at the National Memorial, but also unfortunately celebrate with people that had lost their lives in the line of duty with their kids through the cops program. And that was very touching for me, and I'm still involved with that program to this day. This year, we also celebrate the 70th anniversary of Fred Babcock, who was our only police officer killed in the line of duty on June 4th, 1949. So we will be working with the Legion to celebrate that anniversary. Obviously, as we move forward as a police department, we never forget, and that's sort of been our motto. So it's important that we celebrate those that have served before us and that will continually serve this community and the citizens within it.
Thank you, Chief. Any comments from councilmembers before we go to the proclamation? Councilmember Supple.
Thank you so much for your service. We appreciate it every day. You keep us safe, and the community does really appreciate you. Thank you all.
You know, and I wanted to say also thank you, Jay, and your folks, who are really a very important part of the community. When we were in there talking, you know, when we're looking at our goals and strategies and what have you, one of the things that immediately, the core value that I recognize as, you know, the most important for the city of Richfield is that we've got good police and that we've got good firefighters. Because you take a chance, you never know what's going to happen out there in the world, but repeatedly, repeatedly, your force has excelled, and whenever they do something great, you know, I mean, it just really makes us feel good, you know, that we've got such a force behind us. And you and LeAnn Wise, and I say this because two very important professions, teacher, administrator, and a police, you know, you both serve the people, and you do it very wisely in a way that's not intimidating, but caring and committed to the folks.
Absolutely. Councilmember Troutman.
Chief, I can't say thank you too many times. You, we call what we all do public service, but there's such a big difference. We all take insults time and again for our public service, but then you guys always go a step further, right? We just, we put so much responsibility on your shoulders, and you guys serve us, and you guys take risks that a few public servants have to take. And so, thank you. Thank you, guys. Really appreciate it. You guys are not just an asset, but you're a blessing to our community. And as we talked about, all the community-based policing, you guys are a part of our community. So when we look at you guys, we look at you with pride because you're a part of us and not just protecting us. So thank you, guys, and keep it up, and it's a privilege to be able to recognize the sacrifices that your brothers and sisters have made. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wayland.
A lot of it's already been said, but yeah, thank you so much, not just for the continued service that all of you offer our community, but the desire to go above and beyond that to serve in the community, getting to know residents, being part of community programs, and continuing to work toward the equity goals that we mentioned in our previous meeting. I appreciate all of that work that you're doing.
And I had a couple of questions. So for National Police Week, are there specific things that the Richfield Police Department is going to be doing?
Yes, we have two officers assigned to the Law Enforcement Memorial Association that are currently at the Capitol this evening, with approximately 12 of our officers that are standing in 20-minute increments at the memorial. So we participate that way, and we participate through other events that the Law Enforcement Memorial Association has throughout the year.
And you said there was going to be another memorial celebration, a specific event. Do you have the details of that?
I do not have the details, Mayor, at this time. I'm working with the Legion. Hopefully, we'll have some sort of celebration for the anniversary of Fred Babcock. So we're still working on the details. I will share as soon as I get the details.
Thank you. And like the rest of my colleagues here, I just want to say thank you so much to our police officers and for the leadership of our chief. I am just awed every single day that our police officers are on the front lines of everything, you know, working with folks with mental health issues, housing issues, every type of situation. It's our police officers that are really interfacing with our community in so many ways and figuring out how to be collaborative, how to be innovative, and how to support that community building. So it's about keeping our community safe, and it's about connecting with our community and meeting those most pressing needs, and our police officers are on the front lines of that every single day. So thank you to our officers for that. And, you know, I was just very excited to finally get to do a ride-along and just seeing that in real time, the compassion that the officers had, the collaboration with other parts, with the fire, with COPE, with other organizations, but then also the way that they just worked so well with the Richfields resident to de-escalate the situation and have a successful outcome. And not only thanking to the officers and the chief, but also to the families of our officers every day, you know, they have a spouse, a brother, a sister that is going out and could potentially be facing danger, and I know that that's a lot of pressure and stress for families as well. So thank you to the families. Thank you to the leadership of our chief. Thank you to the commitment of our officers for keeping our community safe and connecting with our residents. And one side comment that we heard at our goal-setting session today is that our Community Development Department is looking at the community policing model and seeing how community development can implement that with inspectors and other folks that are interfacing in our community through community development and making those connections to provide that support. So thank you for your role modeling and leadership there as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to introduce, you know, Tom Fitz Henry, who used to sit over there on the City Council. Good to see you, Tom. Thank you. And also Barry Fritz. Barry? And Barry was our police chief for a while. And, you know, so these are, you know, the other thing I love is when there's a fallen officer that, you know, they come from, all the police folks come from all parts of the state, and they're there because they're loyal, they're committed, and I think sometimes, of course, you say there, but for the grace of God go I. But it's a noble profession, and thank you for having, for currently participating in it and for your service and future service.
Will come and do the proclamation? Whereas, the people of this community wish to join with the entire nation in recognizing the valor, bravery, and dedication to duty of our law enforcement officers. And whereas President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May 15th as Peace Officers' Memorial Day and the week in which that date falls as Police Week, and declared that all flags in the U.S. be flown at half-staff on that date. And whereas, 158 new names will be added to the national monument in 2019. And whereas, this city of Richfield recognizes that our own law enforcement officers, who day after day, hour by hour, serve not only as law enforcement agents of the city to protect their life and property, but indeed are friends, neighbors, and guardians. Now, therefore, I, Maria Regan Gonzalez, Mayor of Richfield, do hereby proclaim May 12th through the 18th, 2019 as National Police Week, and May 15th, 2019 as Peace Officers' Memorial Day in the city of Richfield, and call upon every city to honor and memorialize those law enforcement officers in this country and city who have lost their lives in the defense of our homes, families, or property, and to join with the law enforcement officers in acknowledging our thanks for their services, valor, and dedication to duty and our pledge to continue supporting their unending war on crime and promotion of safety throughout through enforcement in the year ahead. Congratulations, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Why can't we do it all for the whole group? Take a picture of the whole group. Look at all these officers out there on the other side of the screen. They're just as good-looking as the guy sitting here, or maybe more.
And then we can just go right into the Police Department Badge Retirement Ceremony. Chief?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. First of all, I would be remiss if I wouldn't mention my staff, the men and women of the Richfield Police Department, the job that they do every day, and the support from their families, friends, and neighbors to provide the best service that we can to the citizens in the community of Richfield. I feel that we are one of the best departments in the state of Minnesota, and we show that day in and day out, so I want to definitely applaud them for the work that they do day in and day out. This evening, we're going to retire our current badge, which is the badge that I'm wearing. Since the inception of the Richfield Police Department in 1937, we've had roughly only two badges. The original, which is currently inset into the new badge, and our current badge, which has remained unchanged basically since 1967. The redesigned badge withheld from the department. The Contemporary Shield badge will bring in a new era of policing while paying homage to our history with the prominent original badge design featuring the year of inception of the police department, which is 1937, and the Minnesota State Seal in the center. A police officer's badge is perhaps the most visible and recognizable symbol of the policing community around the world. The badge represents honor, integrity, service, and dedication to the people we are sworn to protect. The uniformed police officers of Richfield proudly wear their badges to show their allegiance to the community they serve and the pride they have in the law enforcement profession. As we recognize National Police Week, the retirement of our current badge and inauguration of the new badge, it is important to remember that the badge is much more than just a piece of metal, but rather is an indication of our high standards of service to the citizens of the city of Richfield. The badges serve not only as a symbol of the city of Richfield, but also pay tribute to the past history of our department. As we look at always remembering the past but forging to the future, the new badge helps to instill a sense of pride in the community that our officers serve day in and day out, night after night, 365 days a year. So without further ado, I would ask Officer Metz, who is our newest officer, badge 221, excuse me, we're getting up there in badge numbers. I would like to present him with the new badge, and I put one up here to display it. But the new badge is a shield with the inset of the current, or the old badge, so that we always remember those of us that have served on the Richfield Police Department. So this officially reins in the new inauguration of the new badge. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers.
Thank you very much, Chief. Congratulations. Any questions?
I think we should give him a hand.
Yeah. So Chief, can I ask what constitutes a new badge? And this is, you said the third one for the department?
Well, the officers approached the idea of looking at more of a newer badge, a newer shield, to identify our department. Usually, it comes in streaks when other departments look at changing their uniform or changing our badge. With that, when this idea was originally approached, I said, you know, I want to make sure that we honor all those that served before us and somehow put the old badge or the original badge in the new badge, and then look at more of a shield design, but keeping with the aesthetic of our uniform, which is very traditional. So when we came up with the design, I looked at it, and it's being the shield, but also having the intricacy of the original badge, to me, I think just pays respects to all those that served, but it also forges the future with. those that served, but it also forges the future with the S.H.I.E.L.D.-style badge. And the look of the badge is pretty simplistic. The way our badges are now, depending upon if you're a police officer, a sergeant, lieutenant, deputy chief or chief, those that hold rank are usually all gold where the police officers have some silver in them. These badges are all the same except for the rank tab. So when you see a Richfield police officer, there won't be two distinguishing badges. They'll all be the same. So it will aesthetically look very well with our uniform.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you so much, Chief. Thank you to all the officers who are here. The next item on the agenda is hats off to hometown hits. I will start with Councilmember Supple.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first thing I would like to talk about is that Richfield's own Roosevelt Park is in a competition. So if we can win this competition and get enough votes, they will replace our basketball courts there at Richfield Park, Roosevelt Park, rather, and it's called Our Courts Our Future. You can find it on the Richfield City Facebook page and you can vote once per day, or you can go to www.nba.com/timberwolves/ourcourts. So Richfield's right hanging in there for Roosevelt Park to get a new basketball court and we would appreciate all of you voting for that. I was also asked to publicize a gathering on May 21st, which is a Tuesday evening at 6:00 P.M. at the Brooklyn Park City Council Chambers, and it's a region-wide meeting on affordable housing for lower-income residents. And it's going to emphasize universal design for everyone so that it can, the housing can be designed so it's accessible for everyone. So if you are interested in getting involved in that, it's again on May 21st at 6:00 P.M. at Brooklyn Park City Council Chambers. So it's affordable housing for lower-income residents and universal design for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Councilmember Waylon?
Thank you, Mayor. A few things. I had the opportunity to attend the Richfield High School Musical recently. They did nine to five and they did a wonderful job. It was great to see, see that and how excited and well-prepared all of the students were. Also want to give a shout out to the Friends of Wood Lake for throwing a wonderful dinner fundraiser. I guess that was a couple of weeks ago now and excited to hear how much that brought in to support our wonderful nature center. I guess I'm highlighting a bunch of great events that already happened. The Orange Line Tour. If you didn't know about the Orange Line Bus Rapid Transit that's coming, it's from Burnsville through Richfield up to downtown Minneapolis and back and is coming soon. It's fully funded and I was able to attend with Councilmember Troutman to see the tour and I think they've offered others as well. So excited for that. And then the last thing, I had the honor to be part of Centennial Elementary's Bike to School Day and got to help repair some bikes and get, they got, it was the first time they'd done it and they brought over 100, I think it was over 100 kids to school biking, which was marvelous. And so would love to help promote any other events in town that get people active or specifically with biking. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple announcements, like Councilmember Waylon pointed out, is just, it's always, it's always a joy and a highlight of the year to go to the Fowl fundraiser. But I just wanted to thank our director, new director Amy Merkel, and the Chair of the Fowl Board, Gordon Hanson, for putting on a great event. And also our Director Karen Treg, who took the evening to announce her retirement at the end of the year. And so that marks a multi-decade tenure on her part. She's still, she's still serving, she'll serve through the end of the year, but incredible legacy that she's leaving. And so this won't be the first time we talk about her, I'm sure, in the year to come, but really grateful for her service and hats off to her. Also, summer's coming and with that, lots of Wood Lake opportunities for kiddos. There are summer camps that are run throughout the summer and those are for all ages, opportunities to build forts, opportunities to learn about nature, opportunities to learn survival skills. And if your child has a summer birthday, or maybe if you're an adult and you have a summer birthday, I think it's primarily for kids, but you can use the Wood Lake Nature Center for a modest fee and they have great themed birthday, birthday parties. And so those include critter hunts and treasure hunts and even for kids, you have to be at least eight years old for the birthday parties, but they'll do a survival birthday. So if you have a child and they love the outdoors, or you have a child and you think they should love the outdoors, this is a great opportunity to use our park, use the resources there and so just want to let folks know about that.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe and I think Mary can, that on the 18th, which the League of Women Voters is meeting, they are, they will be discussing, this is their monthly meeting, they'll be discussing the Orange Line and John, Jack Bowes from Public Works will be there. And this is an opportunity for you to go and sit in and watch and, you know, and the League provides, provides so many, many services and they're all about education and so I would encourage you to attend. If you want some more information, you can give me a call and I can let you know more. And then we have, you know, our famous Richfield Garage Sale that starts on the 16th through the 18th. It gives you a great opportunity to buy little treasures or little antiques or little gag gifts. That's what I buy when I go, or books. But it'll, it'll be hopefully a nice warm day and we can be outside and join our community the way we really should have a few, few weeks ago, but the weather has not, not necessarily been positive for us, so. And that's about it, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. A couple of things. So this Saturday from 7:00 to noon is our first Richfield Farmers Market and we will have farmers markets every Saturday from 7:00 to noon throughout the summer, so please go. I was reading there's a bunch of new vendors. It sounds really exciting. Great way to meet your neighbors, to go out and enjoy our Veterans Memorial Park, get some veggies and good food and a lot of times they will have activities or music there as well. So the first opening day is this Saturday. Super excited. I can't believe it's farmers market season. For me, that's the signal of like summer starting is the farmers market is open. On May 27th, we, from 2:00 to 4:00 P.M. at Veterans Memorial Park, we have our Veterans Day Ceremony honoring all of our veterans. So we'll have a great program. There'll be music, there'll be a guest speaker, I think there'll be media there, another way, a great way to connect with your, your neighbors and a great way to memorialize and honor and thank all of those who have committed service to our country. So that's May 27th, 2:00 to 4:00. And then I wanted to give a brief update. So the legislative session has less, we're less than a week away in terms of the end of session and we got a really nice letter from our state representative, Michael Howard, and he just gave a few updates. Right now, the Senate and the House and the governor are all negotiating final budgets, final bills, and we will find out kind of what the outcome will be of that. But there are a few things right now that are being negotiated that would be good for residents to know that will impact the city of Richfield. So one is local government aid and differences in the Senate and the House's proposal in terms of how much local government aid would come to Richfield. And so there's an increase in one of the proposals, the House tax bill, and then no increase in the Senate proposal. So that is up for negotiation right now. The same thing is true for pension aid. So this is for all jurisdictions with public employees enrolled in para pension plan. And again, discrepancies in, in this, the plan is to sunset in 2020 unless there's an extension for this. And in one, there's no extension, or in one, there's an extension and then in another in the Senate proposal, there would actually be a loss of over $45,000 per year from that current funding. Same thing with transportation, pretty big discrepancies right now in the House and Senate in terms of the type of transportation funding that would come to the city of Richfield. And lastly, discrepancies in amount of state funding to increase affordable housing, which we know is crucial, not only in Richfield, but in the entire state of Minnesota. So we've got less than a week till the close of session unless there's a special session and if there's not agreement, there will be a government shutdown. So hopefully, none of that happens and we have agreement and it turns out for the better of the city of Richfield. But that was just an update that we got from our state representative, Michael Howard, and wanted to thank him for that update and inform residents that that is, that is something that we will, that is impacting, that will impact us and we'll learn more about soon. And then lastly, just one event that I went to over the weekend, I was able to go to the Rotary's Little Free Library Assembly Event where I can't remember how many Little Free Libraries, but quite a few were donated, all of the materials, all of the supplies to residents and the materials were over $100 each for each library alone. And residents, you know, got them for free. Thank you to the Richfield Rotary Club. There was paints, there was food. It was a great activity to get to know your neighbors, but also people had so many ideas for their little library. Some of them, they were trying to make them look like their homes, others, they had great ideas because they were educators or depending on their own passions, they were going to put books for children, educational, cross-cultural type of books. So it was really neat to hear the ideas that everyone had for their Little Free Library. And a huge thanks to the Richfield Rotary, another club like the League of Women Voters who has been around for a very long time in Richfield and who's always looking for more membership and ideas. So thanks to the Rotary and please consider be, becoming a member. All right, the next item is the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda has been approved. The next item is the Consent Calendar and that goes to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The Consent Calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the Consent Calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have been also approved. No further action, council action on these items is necessary. Item A, consider adoption of a resolution authorizing the city to affirm the monetary limits on statutory municipality tort liability. Item B, consider approval of a third amendment to the site lease agreement at 7401 Logan Avenue South between the city of Richfield and Sprint Spectrum Realty Company LLC with regard to the extension of lease renewal term. Item C, consider approval of a post-issuance debt compliance policy. Item D, consider approval of the Public Works Department water service shut-off policy. Item E, consider approval of the Richfield Utility Box Wrapping Policy and adoption of a resolution of support of the selected photographs to be used to wrap the Hennepin County-owned utility boxes located at Penny Avenue and 66th Street and Nicollet Avenue and 70th Street. Item F, consider approval of an annual request for a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Academy of Holy Angels located at 6600 Nicollet Avenue South for their annual Holy Angels Rock the Lawn event taking place Friday, June 21st, 2019. And finally, item G, consider adoption of a resolution granting a site plan approval and a variance for a restaurant at 6433 Penn Avenue South. I submit the previous items for your consideration as part of the Consent Calendar.
Thank you, City Manager. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion from council? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
The Consent Calendar has been approved. The next item goes, I have the next item. All right, second here.
I did, I might be a little late, but can I say something?
Oh, yeah.
I just wanted to acknowledge, thank you to the applicant from the Teacup Restaurant for being here and we're excited about the new restaurant. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Mayor, since, since we have a business owner, would it be appropriate if we gave him a chance just to come up and introduce himself to the community?
Sure. Would you like to say hi and introduce yourself? You, you don't have to if you want. Yeah, you can come up here. And if you could just sign your name and your address, please, and there's a paper.
Sure.
Yep.
Do you want to tell us about, tell us about yourself and your business real quickly?
Sure. My name is David Fong. Me and my wife, we founded Teacup. It's a bubble tea shop, which bubble tea is something originally from Taiwan that where I originally from. So we started in Richfield, actually, in 2011 at the corner of 66th and Nicollet. So we were there for about a year and a half that unfortunately that we had to move, but since then we've been trying to get back and it's been seven, eight years that we finally had a chance to find a good spot and be back to Richfield.
Now what's your address of the restaurant?
6433 Penn Avenue.
Okay.
Right next to the Sherwin-Williams, across the street from the Richfield Liquor Store.
Okay. And when will you be opening?
We're looking to start construction in June or July and if everything goes well and hopefully by the end of the year we can complete the construction.
Beautiful. If people want to follow you online, is there like a spot?
I'm sorry?
Is there, is there a place that people want to learn more about the, do you have like a social media or a website or anything that people wanted to learn more?
Oh, yes. On Facebook, we have a page, just facebook slash Teacup, as well as Instagram, MyTeacup, that you can find pictures, our offerings and everything.
Welcome to the neighborhood. Welcome back.
Thank you very much.
Welcome back. Thanks for speaking.
Mayor?
Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Garcia.
I was going to ask John something.
Oh, okay. Thank you for coming.
All right, thank you.
No, I'd like to ask Mr. Stark. I know that we, we got some correspondence from Planning Commissioner and was concerned about parking spaces and I watched the Planning Commission meeting and I understand that if there is a problem, it's something that, that we don't have to worry about in this, in the instant moment, but that in fact, you know, some, some other, some other related parking space issues can be resolved.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Garcia, Council. As you said, there was a very small shortage of parking spaces for the Teacup. There are a couple, you know, mitigating factors. One is, you know, we always try to balance, we spent some time in the previous goal-setting session talking about economic development and business development. We always have to balance, you know, the ability for somebody to operate a business and make sure our regulations aren't so onerous that they're not able to. In this case, they have 13 spaces available to them. There are other places in the corridor that, that patrons could park. So I really don't have concerns about parking at that location for this business and I'm glad to see you guys approve this.
Okay. Thank you.
There, there was some concern whether there were 13, there were 13 actual parking spaces or about the feasibility of that. Has that been confirmed by staff or anything that the, that there are, there are 13? That was just one of the questions that was, that was raised.
Yeah, to the best of my knowledge, there are 13 legitimate usable parking spaces.
Thank you. Great. I will go to the next item for consideration, which is a consideration, or the consideration of a first reading of an ordinance amending zoning code section 537, mixed-use districts and... mixed-use districts in section five twelve district. So this was originally in the consent calendar. It's a first reading. I just, since there was a lot of different changes, it's a bigger item. It was also, part of it was a split vote on the Planning Commission. I just thought it would be nice to take it off and have an opportunity for council to look at it more, ask any questions before the second reading. So I'm only gonna read a part of this and then I'll open it up for staff and council to discuss. So planning staff routinely review zoning ordinances to ensure consistency, identify issues that arise and make adjustments as needed. In reviewing the mixed zoning district section five thirty-seven, staff found a number of inconsistencies in the table of uses between mixed-use districts and other zoning districts, as well as other issues that warranted review. The mixed-use district was first implemented in two thousand and six, following adoption of the I four ninety-four corridor master plan and were initially tailored specifically for the types of large lots that have frontage on both Seventy-seventh Street and on four ninety-four. There are numerous text references to four ninety-four in the code. These regulations were modified in early two thousand and nine to allow greater flexibility for the development of small lots, less than two acres. Since that time, the mixed-use designation has been applied to both Penn Avenue and Cedar Avenue corridors. However, rather than amending the mixed-use district language, overlay districts were created. Most recently, mixed-use zoning has been implemented for approved developments such as the Lindell Gardens, the ME, and could be extended to additional sites in the Lindell-Hub-Nicolet area that are guided for mixed-use development in the comprehensive plan. Staff believes that is now time to remove most of four ninety-four specific language from section five thirty-seven so that the mixed-use district regulations can be more easily applied across the city. The goal of this ordinance amendment is to address inconsistencies between districts by replacing the table of uses, table one, amend language specifically to the four ninety-four corridor, and make other adjustments based on lessons learned from recent approved development projects. So I'll just stop there. There's more, but that kind of gives a nice summary. I don't know if there's any additional comments from staff.
You know, I would say that, you know, ninety-nine percent of what's in front of you, the Planning Commission agreed with. The issue with the inconsistencies is kind of twofold. One is a practical issue. When a developer comes in and reads in one section of the code where a requirement says one thing, in another section of the code, it says another thing, there's some confusion and they don't know which to follow. So that's from a practical standpoint. From a legal standpoint, that probably opens us up to some challenges that if we apply it one way one time and one way another, that it's an arbitrary and capricious decision. So we're worried about it from that standpoint as well. So like I said, you know, ninety-nine percent of this, the Planning Commission agreed with, said, yes, our zoning districts should be consistent regardless of how we title them. The one area that there was some difference of opinion was requirements specific to parking. And in that case, for our commercial, sorry, for our multifamily districts, it talks about a parking, a minimum parking of one point five spaces per unit. But that there are modifications for proximity to transit or if an apartment building had some ride-sharing program or some extraordinary things, that that could be reduced to one point two five. However, in the mixed-use districts, it talked about a two-space requirement per unit. And so staff had recommended, based on discussions with developers, seeing how the industry's moving, we'd recommended actually going below the one point two five that was in the multifamily districts to a one point oh. And there was some pushback from the Planning Commission on that. Since that, we've revised what we're bringing you to no longer recommend going down to one point zero spaces per unit. We're recommending going to the one point two five, which is the minimum that it can be modified to in other districts. And we can come back and talk about the one space later on its own merits.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from Councilmembers? Councilmember Supple?
I too watched the Planning Commission replay, and I think it was a healthy discussion about the parking things. And I think this is a good compromise to have it at one point two five. I think that we need to have much more robust discussion about it and that keeping it at one point two five is good because it protects the neighboring community from having parking overflow into the streets and addresses that concern. So thank you for reaching that compromise in the one point two five.
Yeah, and just as a frame of reference, the Lindell Plaza Apartments at Sixty-fourth and Lindell, that's one point three per unit, and that's been functioning for, I don't know, eight years now. And I've never once heard a complaint from the neighborhood about spill-over parking there.
Thank you. Councilmember Whalen?
I was just gonna add, I believe the, is it the Henley Development that is at one-space-per-unit ratio? And that also has not had complaints?
Yeah, I believe so. Well, that hasn't been developed yet. That's what it was approved at.
Okay.
You know, and so the apartment, the multifamily, this won't always be the case, but so far, all the multifamily developers we've been working with intend to hold these apartments for the long term. So they're not developing this and then selling it and moving on. So it's in their best interest, their best self-interest, to make sure that there's adequate parking.
I would also just, sorry to keep going. I appreciate, I think staff has discussed having, in a future date, a broader conversation around parking ratios and requirements more broadly throughout the code. And I, from the discussion at the Planning Commission and with a few residents leading up to tonight, I think that would be helpful. I think there's a lot of questions about kind of what is needed, what is best practice throughout the region. And so I think, like Councilmember Supple said, there's been some healthy discussion already. And I think there's a desire for more. So thank you for recognizing that.
Yeah. And, you know, this is one of my favorite kinds of things about Richfield, is that, you know, there are parking ratios that are very urban. You know, in Minneapolis, there are cases where they don't require any parking, so zero parking. And then there are parking ratios that are very suburban. You know, I'm sure that there are places down south of the river that require two spaces per multifamily unit. And the great thing about Richfield is we're both, we're urban and suburban. That creates some conflicts, but there are conflicts that are part of the fabric of the community and what makes it so great.
Other comments? Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to recognize that there were some definite differences, strong differences of opinion, but I just wanna just share my appreciation for all our commissioners who shared them and shared them respectfully and shared them passionately. I don't feel like anybody held anything back, but we usually get a better product when people speak frankly, but not personally. So just want to thank all of them publicly.
And then one of my comments was already stated. And I also watched the Planning Commission meeting. And I just thought there was a couple things that would be helpful to clarify on the record for residents who didn't see it or folks who are watching this meeting. So could you talk about the purpose of the parking minimums? And, because that is one of the items we're looking at. There was some language that was discussed.
Sorry. Reason for parking minimums is really to protect the neighborhoods around there from spill-over parking to ensure that whether it's a restaurant, an apartment building, whatever kind of use, that they have enough spaces on-site to meet the parking demand. And it's a balance, you know, and we work through it. Occasionally, every few years, something comes up where there are problems with spill-over parking. But we've always been able to come back after the fact and find some solutions that work when that's the case.
Thank you. And then, in terms of just kind of making these two standards comparable so that there's, they're not, the code isn't stated differently in different places, why is this treated differently than high-density residential? Or how is it, how is it different?
I don't know. We're trying to make sure it's not. So maybe I'm not understanding the question.
So I guess it's just, it's just gonna be applying the high-density residential parking standard to mixed, to the mixed use.
Yeah, in cases where there are ten or more units. That's my, I believe that's the case. I'll double-check that.
Thank you. I was just trying to get a better grasp of that. Any other questions, comments? Yes, Councilmember Whalen?
I will also just thank staff for, I think this, we talked about this because it was the point of most discussion in the Planning Commission, but also want to thank you for combing through the entire policy and figuring out all of the little changes that need to be made. When we have more consistent code, it makes it easier for developers to know upfront what we're hoping for, which saves staff time. I think this also, looking ahead to be able to apply these codes to broader areas around the city, making sure the language gets at that range of places we could apply this. I just really appreciate it. This is not the fun and glorified part of city policy, but it's really important. So thank you, staff, for working on it.
Well, I would say there are probably some city planners that do find this fun, but I'm not one of them.
Great. Any other comments? Great. Thank you, everybody. So I will make the motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance amending zoning code, zoning code section five thirty-seven, mixed-use in section five twelve districts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The first reading has been approved. Thank you. The next item goes to Councilmember Supple.
All right. So this is consideration of the adoption of a resolution awarding the sale of eight million eight hundred sixty-five thousand dollars worth of general obligation bonds, series two thousand and nineteen A. Included within the city's five-year street reconstruction plan adopted by the city council on July tenth, two thousand and eighteen are two projects, the reconstruction of Sixty-sixth Street and the reconstruction of Lindell Avenue. The city previously issued for the Sixty-sixth Street project, nine million one hundred thirty thousand dollars worth of general obligation street reconstruction bonds, series two thousand and seventeen A, and nine million seven hundred seventy thousand dollars worth of general obligation street reconstruction bonds, series two thousand and eighteen A, of which four million was for the Sixty-sixth Street Project. The par amount of the new bond will be eight million eight hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. And the par amount is net of a one million dollar cash contribution from the city. The source of the cash contribution is the local government aid set-aside funds. Debt service for the two thousand and nineteen A bonds will be provided by an estimated annual debt service tax levy of four hundred seventy-seven thousand three hundred ninety dollars and a one hundred fifty-one thousand three hundred forty-dollar contribution from the city's utility funds. The estimated annual increase in taxes from the issuance of the two thousand and nineteen A bonds for residential property valued at two hundred thirty thousand dollars is estimated to be twenty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. So the bids for these general obligation bonds were due today in the offices of the Ellers and Associates Incorporated. And so we have not heard the results of that. Director Regis just passed those out, so I'm gonna turn it over to you to tell us what happened.
Well, and in turn, I'm gonna turn it over to Rebecca Kurtz from Ellers and Associates. And we'll steal a little bit of her thunder, but a lot of those numbers you just read off have been reduced thanks to the good fortune of the bidding we received today. And I'll let Rebecca tell you all about it.
Good evening, Rebecca Kurtz from Ellers. And as Chris said, he did hand out a sale day report that summarizes the results of the sale today. I want to take a step back, though, and as the city has done in the past, we did go through the rating process with Standard and Coors prior to the issuance of the debt. And I want to again congratulate the city. Standard and Coors affirmed the double A-plus rating with a stable outlook for not only the bonds that were issued or sold today, but also for your outstanding debt. I included a copy of the full rating report in the packet, but I just want to make a couple, point out a couple highlights from what they said in the report. The rating reflects Standard and Coors' assessment of the strong economy for the community of Richfield, the very strong management with strong financial policies and practices under Standard and Coors' financial management assessment methodology, strong budgetary performance with a balanced operating results in the general fund and an operating surplus in the total government fund level for fiscal two thousand and eighteen, a very strong budgetary flexibility, very strong liquidity, and with access to external liquidity that they consider strong. And then also, they recognize that sixty, almost sixty-six percent, sixty-five point seven percent of the city's debt will be retired within a ten-year period, which is viewed as very positive. And then finally, the city has a strong institutional framework. So again, the complete report and all the details is available. But I think with the affirmation of the double A-plus rating, it really is a testament to what the city has done for the planning, not only for these large projects, not only in the recent years, but really the first street reconstruction plan was adopted in two thousand and fifteen. And you've continued to amend it so that you can fund the projects, complete the utility and street projects that need to be done to maintain your infrastructure. And I'll do it while you continue to maintain the bond rating and have that financial responsibility to the community. So again, I want to congratulate current council for the work that you've done, the past council that started in two thousand and fifteen with getting all of these plans together. And then also the staff, both in engineering and finance and Chris here, for making sure that those pieces come together and are managed from the financial standpoint. So with that, as in the packet that was handed out, we were excited. We received eight bids today. The low bid was F N T, FTN, Financial Capital Markets. They're based out of Memphis, Tennessee. And their low bid was a true interest cost of two point six two percent. From a comparison standpoint, when I was here about a month ago calling for the sale, we had estimated about three point one percent, so slightly lower than what we had estimated. Along with the bids, we did receive a premium bid, which in very basic terms means that you will receive all of the money that you need with the million-dollar cash contribution, a total of nine point seven million for the project. However, there was extra money. So with that, we were able to reduce the size of the bond. So you will notice that the actual par amount of the bond went from eight point eight six five million to eight point three two five million. So what that means ultimately from a practical standpoint is that your annual debt service payments were reduced from our estimated four hundred and seventy-seven thousand four hundred to about four hundred and one thousand three hundred and fifty annually. And then, of course, with lower debt service payments, that passes down to a little bit lower on the tax levy, a little bit lower contributions from the three utility funds that will be supporting their portion of the debt, and ultimately, lower interest rates over the term of the debt. With that, we are anticipating or do plan to close, so funds will be available on June sixth. And we are recommending that you do award to FTN with the true interest cost of two point six two percent. There is a resolution in your packet. Just to address any questions, the bond amount that is in the resolution is the higher amount. It is basically a form of resolution. If you do move forward with awarding the bonds, we will have an updated resolution that does have the correct information based on the sale day report that I provided. It's a timing issue of when packets are due versus receiving bids this morning.
So can I ask a clarification question? When we do the motion, are we to use the eight point eight six five million or the eight point three two five?
I would, I would use the eight point three two five because that is the final amount with the reduced amount. because that is the final amount, um, with the reduced amount based on the bids that were received, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I just had a quick, uh, a couple of quick questions. So that, that surplus, was that in surplus of revenues that we weren't, that, that the city received? That we're able to?
Uh, so with, um, the bonds, let me put my numbers out here. Um, we needed nine point seven million for the project, and that was what we had structured the, uh, debt for at the time that we were here calling for the sale. With the bid that we received today, the underwriter actually, in, in simple terms, gave more than the nine point seven that we needed. Um, and with that, a little bit, probably, a little bit higher interest rate as a trade-off. And so because we don't need more than nine point seven for the project, we were able to say, we don't want the additional seven hundred thousand roughly. We're going to reduce the bond and, um, still have the nine point seven needed to complete the project. It's, it's, um, a premium bid is done to help within the sale to the, the third parties. And it's a way that the underwriter can, well, i- in their mind hopefully, um, increase the marketability when they go out then to sell it to the investors.
But we declined to utilize that credit?
Correct. Um, and, and the reason for that is if you did retain that extra roughly seven hundred thousand dollars, um, that you would have to still pay the debt service on it. So that would have, um, increased the amount of the levy. You'd have to increase, or the, um, interest on the bonds would increase because it all would be on the total amount of funds that you retained.
And so, so that's the fruit, I just want to rec- recognize if we can of, of, uh, prudence on our director's part, right? Yeah, and, and just being, being frugal and not, not, not pushing everything to the limit. I just want to, I just want to, for, for folks at home, this is, this may be hard for everybody to follow along, but I want to give, give us a chance to just explain your process.
Well, I mean, when Rebecca tells me we have a re-offering premium and it can reduce the principal of the bonds, first thing I think of is, okay, less tax levy, less interest cost. And to me, that's a win-win, and it's the decision I chose to make. I think it's the best decision, prudent financial decision to make.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions from councilmembers?
Then I will go ahead and move to adopt a resolution awarding the sale of general obligation bonds, series two thousand nineteen A, in the original aggregate principal amount of eight million three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, and fixing their form and specifications, directing their execution and delivery, and providing for their payment as recommended. Thank you.
Second.
Um, and before we continue, I just want to say thank you to Ellers for, um, coming, for presenting, for taking something that's extremely complicating and sharing it in plain language for all of us and for our residents. And thank you, um, to Director Regis for your leadership and, and just the stewardship of our funds and the future of our city. Um, to get that bond rating that we have, I mean, is your leadership and your work over the years, year after year, um, and, and really working with all of our staff, working with our council, our city manager, to make sure we understand what the issuance of all, of debt is, and making sure that we are also covering those crucial expenses that we absolutely must pay for, and balancing all of that. Um, so, so thank you for your work. This is a, a great example again of, of everything you've done to, to get us here. Um, and the residents should know we are in great, in great hands financially and with, with great leadership. So, thank you very much, Director Regis.
And I just, could I just?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to say that, um, Chris is very, very conscientious. And I think, um, you know, now that our former, um, city manager is gone, I, I think we, we, um, you've, you've been able to explain things and, in a way that, um, that's understandable and, and that's a little bit easier than before. And I appreciate, you know, that, that you are, um, always looking out for the city. And, uh, and that's important naturally to all of us who live here. And to Rebecca, I thank you, you know, thank you. You'd, I know it's difficult to work with Chris, but, but I think you guys make a good team and you've put forward some good work.
And it's important for our residents to see what this is going towards. This is not, um, any extra frills or anything like that. This is our absolutely basic infrastructure, must, um, must-do changes that our city needs um, to, to, to continue working on. So, um, you know, that's, that's important for our residents to know. This is ab- about our basic city services, our infrastructure, and keeping them in top shape. Councilmember.
I just wanted to mention one thing, just because, um, reviewing conversations about work sessions are maybe less pop- as popular as city council sessions are, because I know for the dozens of people that are watching right now. Um, but I really appreciate the, the work sessions that we're going through. Just looking at, as we look at paying for these bonds, we're not just looking at these, but we're looking at really the, the significant projects that we have in the coming years, and knowing that we have a lot of important things to accomplish. Um, but we have to set priorities. And I appreciate, I just want to say thank you to our city manager and to Director Regis that we have to, we have to, to look and, and even some painful looks here in the next year or so of what, what we, what we have to do and what we really want to do, and maybe even some things we can't, we can't do. And so, we're having those conversations for, for those that, we don't see that here, but, but we have, we're having those conversations. And I would, I'd be lying if I said I, I'm looking forward to those. I'm, I, but I am looking forward to those, because they're, they're important. I just want to thank you that it's not just this, but it's that deeper level that we're, we're, we're beginning to, and continuing to grapple with.
There's been a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
The resolution has been approved. Thank you very much, Director Regis. The next item goes to councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a consideration of, of an approval of a facility dedication request for a memorial garden, um, dedicated to Gertrude Ulrich near the Richfield Banshell site. And, um, before I start in, well, let me read the first paragraph here. The city council adopted a facilities dedication policy in two thousand oh-eight to establish guidelines for di- for. Hijo, like, ¿qué es esa palabra?
Dedicating recreational.
No, that's okay, let me see. Okay, for dedicating recreational facilities and amenities in the city. The policy states the city does not accept requests to permanently rename recreational facilities or amenities, but as an alternative, offers guidelines to dedicate such facilities to the memory of an individual or organization by granting the installation of an onsite dedication plaque. And, um, and so, before I start, I, I wanted to acknowledge that we have with us Margaret Sevier. Hi, Margaret. And Margaret Sevier was, you know, the, the, the Richfield Sun editor, and his name escapes me.
The one now?
No, no, the one we used to have.
Andy?
Andy, Andy, yeah. Andy, uh, whenever he wrote about Gertrude Ulrich, he always said, Gertrude Ulrich and her shadow. Margaret Sevier, because they were such good buddies. They would, they went all over together and they did the, they, they had tickets to, to many plays. Um, so let me tell you a little bit about Gertrude. Gertrude and, and her husband Jerry met in college. They were married, and they moved to, um, seventy-six oh-one Ulrich Avenue. And, uh, they had six, six children. And Jerry was a dentist, and Gertrude was, she, she majored in mathematics. And she taught for a while anyway, so, um, and one of her, her youngest child used to, uh, study at the University of Minnesota. And I worked at the university. And Sister Charlotte Ann Leclerc, who was also another member, founding member of, um, the League of Women Voters, she worked, uh, at Saint Mary's. So we all rode the, the school bus together. Well, it wasn't a school bus, it was a metro bus, but most everyone that rode it was the fifty-two G. And, um, and so Gertrude's son is someone that Sister Charlotte Ann and I always fought for to, to make sure we got on the bus and could get, got to sit next to Teddy. But, one of, one of the, you know, Rich, um, Richfield was honored, I think, we should, to have Gertrude Ulrich. She was the matriarch of Richfield. Um, were it not for her, I mean, when she and other of the League of Women Voters founders, um, got together, you know, they're the ones that are really instrumental and, and really influenced the city of Richfield when it first started. Um, for one of the things is they persuaded and influenced the city council to go with Oc- with our own aquifers. That's why we don't have Mississippi water, we have good water. And, um, she also got together with the others and, and they decided that we needed a human rights commission. That was one of the important commissions we needed. See, they saw into the future. I mean, Richfield was all just white, but they saw into the future. Then they said, you know, we're gonna develop and we're gonna grow and we're gonna, so, they, they, you know, suggested we have a planning commission. And, you know, because of their efforts, we, um, started a planning commission. The, she was instrumental in so many things. But she, one of, one of the first things that, where she was appointed was to the Cable Commission. And she served there for a few years. She was also, um, a columnist for the Richfield Sun Current. And she alternated a column, um, it was her and Betty Carr. So that was a long time ago, but it was, it was nice, you know, to, to, to see a local resident write a column. Um, she also, uh, was a founder of the League of Women Voters. She was a member of the Rotary Club. She was a member of the History Center and got that going and got started and, and donated a lot of money to that. And she was the referend- a chair of the referendum, uh, school, a school referendum chair. Thank you. Uh, and, you know, even though her kids all went to Catholic school, but she sought and fought for the school referendum to pass because she believed in public education and believed that taxes and public ed- education were very important. And if, and if the state couldn't comply with its commitment and obligation to public education, then it was up to the citizens to vote for a referendum. And so she was a real champion of that. She was a public servant, uh, and she was a civic servant. She gave up her home, um, when Richfield decided that they were gonna build those, uh, apartment units. I don't know, I don't know what they're called. Do you know what they're called?
The, which ones?
They were, they're over there by the Lyndale Shops. Okay, so, um, it's a, um, that happened, and, and Gertrude, who'd lived there, it was her original home, and lived there for fifty-some years and raised her family there. She never hesitated about fighting City Hall, you know, because she knew that her land was valuable. And, um, and so, you know, she moved out and, and bought another home. But, um, I thought that was very, very commendable and showed a lot of strength because not many people, I mean, that was, that was a very nice home. And it was also the office of, of her husband. Um, so, I, I, I really appreciated her, and I really loved the woman. I mean, she was just a real mentor. She, I, it had not been for her, she never, I never would have run for office. I never would have learned the skills that I've picked up because she was always pushing me, pushing me. And she would, and I, and I, and she said, whenever you do whatever you do, a speech or a project or whatever, she said, I'm gonna criticize you. And, uh, and she did. And that's how people grow is when they're criticized, and criticism can be both bad and good, of course. But she really cared enough to do that. And before she died, I, I went, you know, I went to her house and I said, and I was running in twenty-twelve. And I said to her, Gertrude, I said, you've been with me all of this time. And there's one more favor I've got to ask you. And she said, okay, what is it? And I said, let's get our older, um, League of Women Voters friends, because they had all worked on my campaign and had all, you know, and, and have just a party just for us, and let's talk about the good old days. And that's what we did, and, and that meant the world to me. Because she, she gave, it's interesting that sometimes, um, people of color don't have people of color as their mentors. And Gertrude Ulrich and Don Preby were my mentors. And they were just wonderful, wonderful, wonderful people. And they were community builders. They built this community. They gave for their community. They participated in their community. They worked in their community. I mean, they, you name it, you know, that's what they were all about. And they know they were about family, they were about community. And our community in the olden days was like family. And I know Mary was a good friend of hers too, and remembers her very well. And, um, so this dedication is such a, I mean, Rich, uh, Gertrude donated to the Banshell, she donated to the History Center. She donated to the school for referendum. She don't, she did so much. She gave her money, she gave her time, and she gave her spirit. And, um, I just, um, I, there's, I think that when an honor like this comes, and I hope we can visit this policy, and, and, um, and maybe we tweak it too so that it can, because Gertrude deserves this dedication to a memorial garden. It, uh, uh, you know, the Gertrude Ulrich Memorial Garden dedication. It needs to happen, and, uh, and let's not forget the pioneers that came before us. Because they, you know, they, they gave their all. And, and I love and I appreciate the establishment that we have in Richfield, you know, the older folks. Because they're the ones that really worked so hard and sacrificed so much. And now we see people, new people in the planning commission and on the community services and all the commissions. And, you know, they have, they don't know who all these pioneers were. They have no, that, you know, to them, well, who's Gertrude Ulrich? You know, but those of us who knew her, loved her, and appreciated her, knew who Gertrude always, Ulrich was. She was a champion for our city, for our community of Richfield. And, uh, Amy, I guess, I'm s- I'm sorry, I probably said too much. So, uh, A- Amy Markle has, um, has really worked hard with the, with the Richfield Banshell. And this is, um, a job that she inherited. But, you know, I think she, that's one thing about Amy that, that she, in her job replacing Jim Topsonhofer, uh, I think she has, she has one of those environmental- in her job replacing Jim Topsonhofer, I think she has, she has one of those environmental love of nature, love of service in her bones. And she's very conscientious and very, very focused. And I just think that, you know, it's really an honor for Richfield to have someone of her caliber to head our Department of Parks and Racks. And we really appreciate you, Amy. And now, go ahead and say what you want to add.
Kind words about Gertrude. I have fond memories of her, too, working out with, like, every New Year's Eve. She would volunteer her New Year's Eve at our program. And I would work the door with Gertrude. And she would be in this beautiful gown to celebrate the night. And I just remember how lovely she was. Yeah, I was just low on the totem pole, but she would love chatting with me and greeting everyone as they came in. So, I have really warm memories of her. And I just think this garden is a great way to pay tribute to her service and her leadership in the, in the city. I know there are friends of the Banshell, particularly Rick Jabs, has worked really hard with her family to raise the $10,000 to put in the garden. We're really excited to have it implemented for the June 9 grand opening. I think it'll be a wonderful way to show the community our love and support of Gertrude.
Thank you. So, I will move a dedication of a memorial garden at the Richfield Banshell to Gertrude Ulrich. Second?
Any council member discussion? Yes.
I just want to say I will happily vote to approve this dedication. Gertrude truly was legendary in Richfield and was a mentor to generations of people. So, she, if we're going to honor anyone, I think Gertrude is an awesome person to be honoring. Thank you.
Agreed.
It's a great, I don't, I mean, it feels like an honor to just have her garden, you know, this memorial garden dedicated to her. She and others of the League are folks that I have looked up to. I didn't know everybody and I didn't have an opportunity to connect very much with Gertrude. But the history that the League of Women Voters and so many of these community builders, Councilmember Garcia that you talk about, have laid the path for who we are today, the community that we have today, and the leadership that we have. And it's in no small part, thank you to Gertrude, to the other members of the League. And it's going to be great to have this connection in our park and connected to the Banshell, to have that memorial and that place to lift her up, but to lift that legacy up of those leaders in our community. So, I'm extremely excited for this opportunity.
And, you know, Mayor, the grand opening of the Banshell will be June the 9th, right? But they're going to play before that?
Yep. So, Thursday, June 6, we have our first evening entertainment in the park. And then, actually, the Tuesday before, on the 4th, we have children's entertainment on Tuesday morning. It's the official soft opening.
Great, good. So, you'll all be getting information on that. And it's, you know, Vets Park is a flagship park of Richfield. And that will put us on the map the way, you know, like Nature Center did. So, did I move already?
Yes, and that was seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion has been approved. Thank you.
Can we also thank again Margaret Sevier and Martin Kersh, who are in the audience and are, I know, have known Gertrude for years?
Thank you for coming. The next item is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items. The first item is, we got notification from Hennepin County Commissioner Gattel that staff have recommended moving the Southdale Library to Southdale Center. At the Hennepin County Board meeting, they laid over the vote to have community engagement. And they have sent me the specific dates for that. It's May 30th from 6:00 to 8:00, and then June 8th from 10:00 a.m. to noon. And the main goals of the open houses are to inform the community on the recommendations for the new library site, to validate previous feedback on potential library programming, receive additional public input on library programming, and then also, based on the City of Adenas Small Area Plan, receive community feedback on bike ped connections for the surround, or for the recommended library site. So, I just wanted to get those on your calendars. I'll follow up with some more information from Hennepin County when I receive it. And we will, of course, put it on all of our communication channels as well.
Can you repeat the dates?
Yes, I can, sorry. It's May 30th, and that's from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And then June 8th from 10:00 a.m. to noon. And they are both at Southdale.
So, that's a done deal, then? It's going to move?
No, it is the staff recommendation.
Okay.
That they move to Southdale Center. But the Hennepin County Board has not voted yet.
I would, I would suggest that, you know, that those of us that are, that are, those of you that are watching, call our council, our county commissioner Debbie Gattel and urge her to vote no. We don't need a public library at the Richfield, at the Southdale Center. A public library is really a beautiful place. It's where kids and grownups go. It's where you learn things, where you discover things when, where, you know, and you need to have a certain ambience, is that the way you say it?
Environment, no.
Yeah, yeah, environment that's conducive to a public library. And you need to have a safe place, too. There's just too many people at Southdale. And it's not a place for people to go in and sit and rest or whatever. I mean, it's a place to be utilized as a public library. So, I would certainly suggest that they vote no and keep the library where it is and just build a new one. And your second item? Was that your second item?
No.
Okay.
My second item is, Councilmember Whalen is going to have his first listening session also on May 30th from 6:00 to 8:00. And I'm planning to join him. And so, as part of that, we, as staff, looked at how we can promote that event and any events, any listening sessions that council members would want to have. And we don't have a budget to pay for food or location, you know, renting space. But we will promote it. We'll put it on our city calendar. We will promote it through Facebook. And the other thing that I think the council should have a discussion on is because they are not open meetings where we'll take minutes, et cetera, because of the Public Meetings Act and the limitations, there can only be two council members there. So, I think that it would be appropriate for you to have a discussion about how you make sure that only two council members.
Yeah. So, thank you for bringing this up. I wanted to talk more with you, but because of the open meeting law, I haven't had a chance to yet. But I think one of the, one of the key things I heard while campaigning was just that residents really are looking for more opportunities to engage with their council members and kind of be more ongoing conversations about our city policies and finding ways to do that that are a little more approachable to people than kind of what has existed. So, that's what led to this. It's 6:30 to 8:00 on May 30th. I'm hosting it at Hope Church. I'm planning to do this every three months or so and move around in, close to my ward. Hope Church is just outside it. But, yeah, and would encourage, I don't, I'm curious what other people think, if others are interested in hosting a similar event, if anyone, if people want to co-host, and then how we decide, since only two people can be there, how to do that. Yeah, so, curious what other people are thinking or interested in.
Thank you.
I think it'd be, I think that's a great idea, Councilmember Whalen. And I think, if possible, it'd be great to always have two council members there, if that's the limit that can be there. And maybe there's an opportunity, you know, to put an ask out and whoever responds to you first, but, and also try to kind of rotate so that if there are multiple council members interested, folks have an opportunity. And I actually, this, this summer, I will be working on kind of what that constituent outreach plan looks like for me. And maybe that's something we can, you know, we can work on in your ward is to co-host something together. But I am interested in also doing something like that similar. And that's my goal for the summer is to think about what does that look like for me in my position. But I think that's, that's a great thing that you're doing.
Thanks.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
I would maybe extend a challenge. And I saw Councilmember Troutman had to step out. But to him and then also to Councilmember Garcia as kind of the people representing a specific ward, to, I'd be open to a conversation if there's interest in kind of hosting these in each place, if we want to come up with some sort of unified vision of what they look like, or if people want to do it their own way. I'm open to ideas or suggestions. And then, kind of figuring out from there, since Maria and Mary, you represent the whole city, kind of how you fit into that.
Thank you. Great idea. Any other items? Nope. And the last item goes to Councilmember Garcia.
You know, I wanted to thank our city manager, Jared Volto and Pam Demetrankel, for really sacrificing and going to that conference that you were at. I'm sure that it was, I hope you had decent weather. But I'm sure that, you know, not, not everybody would want to go there. But, you know, I trust that you learned a lot and appreciate you going. So, I would like to move claims and payroll.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Claims and payroll has been moved. And with that, we will adjourn this meeting.